Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator/controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator/controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well run.
Good morning. It is Tuesday, June 13th. I'd like to open the Legislative and Human Resources Committee today. I'd like to open it with item number one on our agenda, public comment. Is there any public comment today? Seeing none, we will move to item two, approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that, Madam Chair.
Senator Cornick, supported by Commissioner Vaughn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Item three, Board of Commissioners amend Section 6.2 of the standing rules. As you all may recall, we had some rule changes that we were looking into, and this was brought up at our last meeting. We've given commissioners several days to review any changes, submit any questions, make sure that they're all set with any changes we have. And our board chair here today, Commissioner, Chairman Salfel, to give us some brief comments as well.
Do you want to do the motion?
Do I have a motion to, a motion for item three?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Breavy, supported by Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair, Madam Chair. I was here today, by the way, I hope you don't mind me sitting here. I am ex officio for all the committees, and I understand that some of the past chairs, well back, but used to sit at committee meetings, so I thought it was better than standing up and voting. But, yeah, I just wanted to give you guys a background on this, because it kind of was something that I flagged and pushed. What I'm trying to do is reestablish what was in the rules prior to 2015. And that's that the board can adopt what the report says when a committee works on a report, submits a report. The board being, well, I should say either the committee or the board, depending on where the report comes from. In the old rules prior to 2015, that the board, by way of example, may approve table, postpone, et cetera, the report. The key word there is approve. And so, we did that with two very important reports that this board worked on. The first was the Community Collaboration Work Group, which was the old One Kent Subcommittee Task Force that included stakeholders from the community. And in the end, that was probably one of the most important things that occurred in order to stop that movement. And I'll be very blunt, the county was not in favor of that movement. And we saw a lot of concerns that weren't being addressed. And that was our way to sit down, spend over a year working on it with important stakeholders from the community, such as the Right Place, the Chamber, et cetera. And when we got done, we issued a report. The Board of Commissioners then adopted that report. Under the current rules, and I don't know the background, 2015, that right was removed from the rules. I suspect it was an oversight when that was done, because I don't recall any discussion in 2015 on why we would want to remove that opportunity for a board or committee to adopt a subcommittee report. And I know we did do some restructuring of how that whole section looked in that year, so I'm just assuming that that maybe was an oversight. It would have been great if we had flagged that prior to, while the subcommittee this year, the rules, he was working on it, and I know that was a question raised at your last meeting. But the reality is, I didn't notice this until I got a question on the friend of the court report and whether the board would adopt, be willing to adopt that. And I started looking at the rules, and that's when I pieced it together that this important provision that had always existed in our rules in the past suddenly was not there anymore. And so, yes, it would have been great to get to it back then, but it was something that did not come to light until then. So, I, so what you have before you is a change that puts back that right. Specifically, it talks about item four, request a motion to adopt a report, and if applicable, refer specific recommendations to the appropriate standing committee for further action. There were a few tweaks on this report, on this proposed language from the last one you looked at, and that was, I think, as a result of some discussions I had with Commissioner Stack. He raised some very good, some ways to update this, and we did that. And so, hopefully, this language is good with the committee. It certainly gives, puts back, in my opinion, it restores that right that the committees and the boards always had to adopt a report. Let me just end then by saying why I think not having that in the rules really hurts us. Number one, it's hard sometimes to find stakeholders, to sit at a table and meet for a potential year on an important issue. We've done this now with the, I did it with the, I chaired both the Community Collaboration Work Group and then the Agribusiness Work Group, which was also a report that the board adopted. Both reports, in my opinion, very important. Both reports had stakeholders from the community in it. And both reports, both examples, I think, demonstrate where if I go to somebody and say, hey, would you be willing to serve on this important task force? And in the end, the board can't even adopt the report, they're going to say, well, why am I going through all the hassle of meeting every month and working through these things? So I think it could be hard for us to find stakeholders if we don't restore that language. Second, I do think adding the ability to adopt the report formalizes the report, because otherwise, it's just received and filed. And by the rules, received and files has no force in effect. If we have a report, take the friend of the court report, for example, when that comes in, if we want to say, yeah, we adopt these recommendations, you know, it'd be nice to take the report and say, here's a report that the whole Board of Commissioners, Kent County Board of Commissioners adopted, as opposed to just saying, well, here's a report that was received and filed by the county. And then, third, I think that there are, the other option that existed without this was that there could be additional discussion or referring a recommendation to a standing committee for review. In my opinion, that only addresses part of what could happen when a report comes back. Maybe there is no more discussion that needs to be occurring, and maybe there is nothing more for a standing committee to do, but maybe there are things that we want to note are a recommended result in a particular report that we want the community to know that the Board of Commissioners is behind. So for all those reasons, I think it's really critical, and it's, hopefully, it was just an oversight when that got removed, but I think important that we restore that right to the rules. That's what this revised Section 6.2 does. And I thank you for the time, Madam Chair.
Mr. Chair, are there any questions or discussion on this issue? Commissioner Bukowski.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I definitely like this move, and also on our process pile, to remember to have that education with those folks beforehand, like what would, could happen with these reports, whatever it's worth. Commissioner Lanier, who hangs out in the building next door, City of Grand Rapids Commission, she just assumed that the friend of the court advisory stuff was basically just going to be the marching orders to friend of the court and staff. And I said, well, that's not exactly how we do things over at the county. Definitely there are the recommendations, or this is like the first milestone, it's not the last milestone for marching orders. So again, just so we're really clear on what's going to happen with this, what could happen with it, both to recruit good people and that people have the right expectations. So, thank you.
Commissioner Stack.
Thank you. Under the rule, no report even comes back to the board for consideration unless it meets this requirement. It must have specific recommendations for action. I continue to think that it is those recommendations for action that are the most critical part of any report. But I'm also convinced that there are circumstances in which the adoption of the substance or the argument, if you will, that stands behind those recommendations, may also be the appropriate focus. I continue to think that we ought to stay focused as much as possible on recommendations, because that's where the action is. But I accept that this is an appropriate way to address this issue.
Commissioner Stack.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Salfel and Bullcack. I think this is some good work here. I just would note, and I, not knowing the history, that this does give an awful lot of power and prerogative to the chair of the standing committee or the board, which certainly makes sense, but would hope that as we go into this session that, and we receive some of these reports, that those chairs are sure to consult informally, formally with other board members.
Commissioner Buck.
Thank you, Chair. I don't have a problem with this at all. The problem and the discussion that came out was that we did the standing rules, and then this is sort of a Johnny come lightly thing. And we've never done that in the 16-plus years that I've been here. And I don't think we want to see that as a habit. Dan mentioned that last meeting about that same issue and sort of circumvented some of the committee work, as I understood it. And for me, as far as this, I have no problem whatsoever. I don't think we want any redoing the rules after we make the national decisions.
I don't disagree.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion or questions on this issue? All right, all in, do you want to read this in, or are we good? All in favor of item three, amending Section 6.2 of the standing rules, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
All right, on to item four, Sheriff mitigation plan.
This is a request to recommend to the board to adopt the updated hazard mitigation plan as an official plan and submit it to the Michigan State Police Emergency Management Division and Federal Emergency Management Agency Region Five officials to enable the Kent County's Hazard Mitigation Plan final approval. An adopted hazard mitigation plan is required as a condition of future funding for mitigation projects under multiple FEMA pre- and post-disaster mitigation grant programs. Michigan State Police Emergency Management Division and the Federal Emergency Management Agency Region Five officials have reviewed the updated hazard mitigation plan and approved it contingent upon this official adoption. The sheriff recommends adoption of the plan.
So moved. Second?
Moved by Commissioner Cornick, seconded by Commissioner Stack. Any questions or comments on this issue? All right, all in favor of the sheriff's hazard mitigation plan, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, item five, medical examiner performance measurement.
We have here Dr. Stephen Cole, who is our medical examiner.
All right, Dr. Cole, come up, please.
Okay, let's see here. We have a PowerPoint, and there are a few things I have to say here that are a little different than the normal. So the overview is sort of self-explanatory. The main thing I'd say is our metrics, and we'll get going. So, let's see. So, basically, our job as medical examiners is to investigate, under the medical examiner law, all violent deaths, so that's all accidental, suicidal, homicidal deaths. And although drug overdose itself isn't violent, that certainly falls under our responsibility. And then sudden unexpected natural deaths. And so, I, most of you have heard this stuff before, so I won't bloviate too much about this part. But, of course, part of our job, and the biggest part of our budget, is autopsies on cases that we deem necessary. So, and this kind of blends into, mission statement blends into our overview. So, the main job of our department is to, again, investigate the deaths that I've indicated under the medical examiner law. We have six lay investigators and one physician, Dr. Starr, who's also the deputy chief medical examiner. And so, they will take calls from whoever is in charge of the body. It's almost always going to be either the police or a hospital, and gather information. And the next point in the algorithm is that we, either Dr. Starr or I, whoever's on call, decides if there's going to be an autopsy in the cases that are, in any particular case, and then to perform those autopsies. And then, of course, part of our job is court testimony when needed. Less well-recognized function of our department is to issue cremation permits, which is a pretty good act of business, I guess I'd say. And then rarely, if someone wishes to move one of their previously buried relatives, we have to issue the permit for that and then to re-bury them. So, specifically, our goals, the first one. So, the reports that we generate, there are two primary reports. Whenever one of our investigators accepts a case, they have to write a report. We, for several years, have had an online data information system called MDI Log. They have to enter their report into this log. And it's nine total pages, which includes a lot of dropdowns. So, the actual written report is often about a page, but there are lots of other demographic fields that they have to fill out. So our goal is to complete 98% of these reports within two months of the time that they are reported to us. And we have pretty consistently been at that, usually slightly above, usually about 99%. The reason they may not be completed is sometimes there's additional information needed that the investigator just can't get, or that if we have an unidentified person, we ask the help of the police department to track down a potential next of kin, and that can take a while. But for the most part, our reports aren't completed on time and a little faster. Now, we are obligated to, examiners, to determine the cause and manner of death. And when we have to do an autopsy, and this is the one field that I'm going to expound upon just a little bit, our autopsy completion goal is to complete autopsies within three months of death, which might seem reasonable. And for some cases, it is. We are not up to that metric, and I don't know forward if we're ever going to be, because it says there were about 78%, I guess, for last year, almost 79. The reason is that we have had, as everyone knows, a humongous epidemic of drug overdoses. And it's not just the old, I guess what I'd call the good old-fashioned drugs, cocaine, heroin, oxycodone, and so on. There's been a huge increase in fentanyl, which is, many of you may be familiar with in terms of, it's got some publicity, it's been around for many years, and the last probably 10 or 15 years in the form of patches that can, that are legitimately used by patients who have pain, and the patches go on the skin, so they're, the drug is absorbed through the skin. And what, the initial problem we had with fentanyl is that people would either illegitimately obtain it, and they would chew them, they would, and still do, they'll soak them, get the fentanyl into solution and inject it. And sometimes they just use a lot of patches. I had one case where a gentleman was found dead. He had patches, a lot of them were cut up. They're usually about inch and a half by an inch and a half squares with adhesive. This guy had cut them into many pieces, and I don't know how many he had, but he had them plastered literally all over himself. Genital region, on the soles of his feet, and had, of course, quite a high level of fentanyl, lethal level when we did the autopsy. But it's gone far beyond fentanyl. And for the past three or four years at least, there have been types of drugs called fentanyl analogs. So these are drugs with chemically the same structure as fentanyl, but they've added on some extra chemical groups. Many of them are produced in China and bought over the internet. And probably the most famous fentanyl analog is fentanyl, known as an elephant tranquilizer, and it's something like 1,000 times more powerful than heroin. And we've had one death that I know of in Kent County with that. It's an enormous problem in Ohio and Western Pennsylvania. It seems to be moving slowly west. We've had one case here, we had another case from Reed City, and I expect we're going to get more, and I think the drug teams have seized some of car fentanyl. But that's just one of many. Other drugs are furaneal fentanyl, alpha fentanyl, one is U47700, and even though that doesn't have the name fentanyl in it, it's a fentanyl-type drug that was originally developed by the Upjohn Company, hence the U, back in the 70s, and was found to be not acceptable, maybe because it was too powerful for medical use. And so, they developed it, but then didn't use it. Well, the Chinese, at least some manufacturers in China, got in hold of many of these formulas and are producing these drugs. And the problem that we have is that these fentanyl analogs are not routinely identified on our drug screen. So we have a very comprehensive drug screen that we use out of the Spectrum Tox Lab, and it picks up about 550 or 600 drugs and chemicals. And so, it used to be good enough for almost everything. Well, now, what will happen is we'll have a young person with a history of, usually heroin, they always, whoever's given, says, well, he OD'd on heroin. Well, fine, sometimes they do. But in many cases, we do our drug screen, we do a complete autopsy, there's no cause of death found in the autopsy, the drug screen's negative, but yet there's needles, syringes, needle track scars on their arms, and all the paraphernalia, other paraphernalia at the scene, but yet it's a negative drug screen. Well, some of these are turning out to be caused by, probably almost all of them, by these fentanyl analogs. So, we have, another challenge that we've had, and we've worked particularly, we've had pretty good luck with the sheriff's department and the Grand Rapids Police, is a spoon, or a syringe, or a bag of powder will be recovered at the scene. And of course, nobody knows what it is. The police now cannot field test this. They used to have, be able to put a chemical on the unknown substance and at least get some idea. But because of the concern about car fentanyl getting into the air and on the skin of someone who's doing the testing, and the potential, or at least the concern, for an overdose just by incidental contact, because car fentanyl is so potent, that they can't field test. So we often will request that the police agency submit to our lab, or occasionally the state police lab on Fuller, but we prefer it to our lab for us to test. But all this takes a long time. It's usually three or four weeks, at least, for the toxicology, routine toxicology to be done. We get, if it's negative, then we do further investigation, either see if we can analyze for whatever powder or substance is recovered at the scene. We also have a reference laboratory that we sometimes will submit blood to from our patient that has an expanded testing capability for some of these new drugs. But all that takes weeks and weeks. So a lot of that is why we have seen this decrease in our turnaround time. And the other less common problem is that we will sometimes have, usually, a young person found dead, either no medical history or no significant history. We do an autopsy, we find nothing, we do a drug screening, we get nothing. And some of those we suspect as being caused by some molecular mutations at the cellular level. And these mutations, some of them, can result in a tendency fatal heart rhythm. There's no routine way to test for that. There is a research lab out in California that we have used that has a grant to look for these. It's called the Scripps Medical Institute in La Jolla. And they will do this testing for free, so at least it doesn't mess up our budget. But it takes them months. So if we have one of those cases, and it's very important to try to establish if they do have such a mutation, because A, we certainly want to determine the cause of death and rule out other things, and the other thing is, have it, and their family members have it. So we are trying to do basically public health by doing that. But such testing takes a long time, and I have one case from Grand Rapids, it was from October, that they're still haven't quite finished. I email them every so often, and they say, oh, just any day now, we'll get this result. So, I would say that's the main reason for our suboptimal turnaround time, but it does tie into this national public health crisis that we, with overdoses, that we're dealing with now. So I guess if there are, I think I have one or two more slides, but if there are questions about that, I could try to address them. On a happier note, how are we doing with regard to our response? That is, when one of our investigators is called, we want them to get to the scene within an hour of being called, and we've, we're doing really well there. A little over 95% for last year, and the prior years is pretty good, too. One of the issues that may take longer sometimes is, we have seven people. And the arrangement that we have, because everyone's part-time, you can't make somebody take cover, you can't make one person be responsible for a particular segment of time. So what happens is, they rotate, and whoever's the last person to take a call is the last one up. The next person who's up, maybe it's Dr. Starr, he's in the middle of an autopsy, which is going on right now, he gets taken. So the exchange that we pay to find a medical examiner has to just go through the list, and that can take a while. But despite that, we're doing But despite that, we're doing pretty well with our scene investigations. Obviously, every year it's a budget issue, as it is for every department in the county, and I'd say one of our main, two of our main challenges, I'll just say generally, because this isn't the budget committee, is getting educational money to our investigators, because death investigation, as any profession, is constantly changing. There are courses around the country, and there is a state medical examiner, we have a state medical examiner association that has a meeting in Mount Pleasant every year, but my, my goal is to get, at least every other year, have those people attending the meeting, but it's becoming harder because of the budget. And then the other thing, which hasn't played out, or will play out fairly soon, is that Spectrum, for their, the autopsy charge has, charge has increased their rates, so, and this came on fairly quickly, so hopefully we'll be able to deal with that. Accomplishments, let's see here. Okay. So we are accredited by the National Association of Medical Examiners, which is the primary medical examiner organization nationally. We have a very strict, rigid process that we have to go through, where they even send a site visitor, or site inspector, to come and go through our operation, review our reports, look at things like turnaround time, and we've been accredited, I think for about the last seven or eight years continuously. Every five years we have an onsite inspection, which we had three years ago, so, but in the interim, every, every year, we still have to fill out a form, fill out quite a few pages of documentation ourselves, and submit it to the national office. It is kind of on our word, but then we are actually physically have an inspector every four or five years. So we're pleased with that. I think there are thirty-six, thirty-seven medical examiner offices around the country that are so accredited, but there's more of them that aren't. We do have two medical examiner investigators who are certified through the American Board of Medical Legal Death Investigators. This is a pretty rigorous process as well. I initially wanted to require all of our investigators to have this certification, but I was told by HR, "Well, you can't, because the law doesn't require it." But still, two of them have taken it upon themselves, and the third one is underway. And what's going to happen is, basically nationally, is that it will come to the point where everyone will have to be accredited. The government has ratcheting death investigation, and generally the forensic science community, to try to improve performance, improve standards, and require every one involved to be certified in death investigation. So we're underway, we still have a ways to go. Another one that isn't on here, and I'm not sure why, but I think it's going to be, maybe at a future board meeting, there's going to be someone from Gift of Life, which is the organ harvesting organization for me. They, well, they have, they keep a record of all the donations that they get when somebody's died, whether it's a solid organ, they also can take skin and bone for orthopedic and burn patients, they can, even in a deceased person, in some cases, they can take the heart and cut out the heart valves and use those for heart valve replacement surgery. And so all those come from deceased individuals that are passed through medical examiners' offices, and the number one medical examiner office for the state of Michigan. In terms of donations, that includes, and we pass, way past Oakland County, which doesn't cooperate with them much, and Wayne County. So though we're not the biggest office in numbers, we do provide the most tissue for the Gift of Life people, and they're very happy about that, and they do spread the word about our performance. And they have a marketing person or representative that I think is hoping to come to a future board meeting. And, oh, I see, okay, well, this has changed since my copy. So here are some actual numbers from our Gift of Life people. So forty, what I failed to say was eye donors, what they do is they take corneas if they can, because people that have cataracts and so on will need a cornea transplant, many people though, so they, that's also where they come from. So we've steadily increased from one hundred and ten in 2014 to one hundred and sixty-two referrals. That's another issue that if someone has, I won't delaborate anymore, but if somebody has a particular question about this, I could try to answer. Collaborations, of course, the health department is our main one, because basically what we do, the way I look at it, is public health, it's got a public death, but like, hopefully helps public health. And we can see the three areas, we do deal, when we have a communicable disease, we report it to the health department, we report it to the state, sometimes the Centers for Disease Control. We provide information for several drug overdose organizations, and have worked with the suicide prevention agency, of course, emergency preparedness. Last week I was able to go to Michigan State to a disaster meeting, where if there's a disaster, the state has a system called Buy More Michigan Mortuary. And basically what it means is, if there's a mass disaster, they provide a trailer with cooling, refrigerated trailer or reefer for cooling, and they have all these workstations with expertise in dentists, where they have dentists, anthropologists, DNA expert, scene recovery, and family assistance, and we are a part of that, and so that's one thing that happened just recently, where there was an interaction between us and emergency preparedness. Obviously, law enforcement, all the agencies in Kent County, and the state police, and the prosecutor's office. And not every, not all of our contact with the prosecutor's office involves testimony, oftentimes we'll have meetings with them just to explain findings in a case, and help them decide whether they might punish someone. Okay, looking ahead, well, I'm probably the oldest one in the whole department, so we're all old, I'm the oldest, and we don't, I don't have any plans to retire, but of course we all know, sometimes things happen anyway, but Dr. Start would take over if something happens to me. But I do plan several years ahead, at least a couple of years ahead, to let everyone know, so we can start finding a replacement, whether it's him or some. And some of our investigators, probably our average age is well into the fifties of our scene investigators. Dolly Oltoff just retired, or is in the process of retiring, I think she's worked her last day. And we did hire a replacement for her, who's a young woman who's very enthusiastic and hardworking, and we're hoping to continue the administrative procedures as we have before. And as I mentioned, the drug overdose problem is just incredible, and a lot of ME offices around the country are getting, are very short budget-wise because of the increase, because of A, a flat increase in the number of overdose deaths, and then the complexity of doing the toxicology, it's very expensive. And, that's it. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Kohler, are there questions? Commissioner Fronstein.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for all your work, because I know the average person on the street thinks that, like CSI, you guys can do your job in an hour, have everyone care of. Would it, I mean, you had stated that you investigate sudden and unexpected deaths, so let's just say someone walks into their house, and there's a dead body, what is the protocol from there? Is it the local police unit that's going to make the decision whether it's going to be escalated? Do they send the body to the hospital, to the funeral home, or?
Right.
What is the protocol?
Yeah, process, yes, the algorithm. So if somebody walks into a house and finds somebody dead, it often may be a relative that they haven't heard from, times they'll, because they're a little anxious, understandably, about finding their brother or sister or somebody dead, they'll call the police for a well-being check. But at any rate, if they just walk into their house and there's mom dead on the floor, the first thing they're going to, they should do, and I think most people do, is they're going to call nine-one-one, that'll get a police officer there, and probably at the same time, an ambulance. If the person's determined to be dead very clearly right there, then they have to call a medical examiner, because we're to be called on every unexpected death. And frankly, I didn't, it doesn't really say this in our report, we get hundreds of calls every year on deaths that legally didn't have to be reported, but if it's a hospital or a nursing home, and they're just not sure, then they'll call, and it's better to do that than for us to miss one. So yeah, they would call the police, the police, it's not their discretion, they're not death investigators per se, they're homicide investigators maybe, but we're the ones who do the medical end of it, and they call us, and we would then work with them, and the physician, if there is one, and determine what to do. But a lot of times in a case like that, we would bring the body into our morgue, which is another intermediate step, even if they don't need an autopsy. We will, it's a holding procedure while we're gathering information.
Well, thank you for your work. It's fascinating, but not something I'd want to do.
Well, I guess we job security.
Commissioner Milton.
Thank you, Chair. You talked about education for your coworkers to learn more about the drug epidemic. Chris Becker actually had reached out to my husband and I to talk about coming into the schools and actually beginning to educate. Is this something that you might do, I mean, and I'm not suggesting that Chris wouldn't know, but certainly you see the end result, if you will. I'm not suggesting with your staff, but, how am I asking this? Is there, is there something that schools could do, the community could do, or we as commissioners could do, to help better educate our constituents, and certainly our students, as to what is going on with the, I mean, this fentanyl, I mean, I have a nursing background, and it just never, ever dawned on me that we would see it out on the street. It's very concerning.
That is a, well, it's not only a local, and it definitely is a local problem as well as national. I, off the head, I mean, we don't, part of our mission and so on, and funding, doesn't include programs like that, but both Dr. Start and I have given lectures in some schools, their junior achievement has a program, it's mostly career oriented, but I've given some talks to students, particularly at City High or City Middle, in that regard, so there's, we do some lecture, what we do, and there's discussion of drug overdoses, but as far as a focused drug prevention problem, I mean, I think if, if there's an interest in that, there, that we could, I mean, I have a lecture which includes a lot of drug scene photographs and so on. Our office, through Carmen, who's our office administrator, has data on, you know, what the, how many and what kind of drug overdoses we're having. So there are several ways, and I can give you my office number if you want to call, or someone wants to call and discuss.
But that's something you might entertain, or?
Yes, sure.
Wonderful.
Well, because although education isn't part of our legal responsibility, I think it's, because of the unique information and data that we have, you know, I think we could, we'd be glad to help. And it's a problem, it's a public health issue.
Commissioner Bukowski.
All right, thank you, Chair. Thank you for coming out, and thank you for not bringing your photographs from your other presentations, I saw them at the Rotary Club, and I'll leave it at that. The, I don't doubt that you do operate at a high-quality level, and the quote at the very beginning, that, you know, you are judged one of the, one of the best in the nation, so very happy and proud to read that. However, are there additional quality measure could put into your reports in future years? Because everything is kind of a, is a, is an output measure, and just like the turnaround times, as opposed to, you know, how do you measure the quality of your reports? It's great that you're there ninety-five percent of the time, within an hour, but do the sheriffs roll their eyes, or are they happy to see it because they know you're going to do it? And, and again, what's the quality of the report getting done within those months? As well as the very significant impact, because while we aren't the finance committee, I at least hear your request for some additional resources, and, and so what's the impact if it takes months to get this stuff done? You know, is it, you know, so all that being said, is like, to help, help us understand better the, how do you prove your quality? And what is that impact on prosecutors, families, whomever, so?
Well, as the attorneys would say in court, that's a multi-partite question, but quality.
Yes, it is.
I suppose I look at it, it's like having the fox guard the hen house, because there's only two of us that do the reports, as far as locally, so, you know, I think what I do is pretty good, if you ask me, I'll say, "Yeah, it's fine." But what are the external, which is, there's no, here's one way, here's one approach to that. We have the accreditation process, where an inspector comes and reviews quite a few reports. This is someone from, has nothing to do with us, another medical examiner. So that's one significant way where I could say, "Well, you know, somebody that doesn't have any dog in the hunt says we're doing well." The question arises, another way to look at it was, well, who's reading our reports? Certainly if it's a criminal case, not only the prosecution, the police, but the defense reads them, and the defense often does, and certainly can use an expert. So though I don't have any numbers for this, I don't know if the prosecutor's office does, from time to time, you know, we've had folks, there's the Oakland County Medical Examiner is, shall we say, quite active in going around the state testifying against other medical examiners, and he has come here several times, he's been on the losing side. So now that's a small measure, but that is another way where others read our reports. I think having, and again, correct me if I'm going too far afield, and I don't know how much time we have anyway, but with the drug overdose scenario, if, again, the U47700, one of the fentanyl analogs, a case where that was very successful, and I guess the facts speak for themselves, is this was a case, we didn't know what was going on with this person, but there was this powder found at the scene. Powder's brought into our office, we had our lab analyze it, turns out it's this U47700, we, we had patients' blood for that, because we can't test someone's blood for just every known possible drug, there's, it's hugely expensive, and there wouldn't be enough blood. So, so that's why we do our routine testing, and then we kind of hold off and see if there's, you know, any evidence or any reason to check for any other drugs. Well, in this case, there was a hit, and so that, what I would say, our process worked. A routine lab, or the way we did things ten, fifteen years ago, we would, if it were drug, we'd have a negative drug screen, and no way to do anything about it, no way to see if it really is an overdose, or is it some other subtle cause of death. So the process has worked in a number of those cases where we've been able to confirm by, and it's, I think part of it is, I guess, experience, knowing that these drugs are out there, and knowing what ways are there for us to get at this thorny problem, helps. If you get somebody right out of training, they might not have any idea, why do now? Well, so we do have that. My partner and I, when we have either a very difficult case or a homicide case, we each review the other's report to make sure, so it's just going over it, so we do have that quality control measure for the homicide cases. And some of the drug, or some of the natural deaths, again, it's hard to measure, but I would say this, we get somebody that dies, whether it's a more common cause, such as disease, or whether it's an unusual cause of death that might also be inherited, because the tendency to develop heart disease, of course, oftentimes runs in families, then we are, we've been able to alert families to the fact that they are at risk for whatever disease it is that we found, and that they should be checked. And if it's genetic testing, insurance companies now will pay for genetic screening for certain disorders. So I guess there's, there's that way of looking at it, but there's no overview, I guess to finally answer the question, or to answer it in the biggest scenario, there is no, like statewide or national agency that say that reviews every report and says, you know, how good it is. It's kind of the results, I guess, looking out the other end, how, what happens, and are we, are our findings, particularly in a fentanyl analog case, where there's a distributor, and the police want to, and the prosecutor, dealer. distributor and the police want to, and the prosecutor, dealer, you know, our information obviously is crucial to that to prove that the person did die of an overdose and did not die of anything else. So, but you can rephrase that again.
No, I'm, I'm good for this morning, so thank you.
Sure.
All right.
All right, any other questions? Commissioner Steg?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. One follow-up question on the metrics. The three months target for determining cause and manner of death, is, is that a target that is worked in conjunction with the prosecutor's office and the sheriff's department? In other words, does it fit their profile of what they need?
Well, here's the best answer you have to ask them. But, but I, because, you know, we do the best we can and here's, I'll tell you the way I try to work it. For the most part, I think it does, but there's a case now where there was a road rage incident and it was probably about a month ago, a shooting where a young guy got shot. And I don't know if it's going to be prosecuted, but, but the prosecutor reviews all such cases, even if it's self, even if you're protecting yourself or a policeman that shoots somebody and kills them because they're going to kill somebody else. That's a homicide by definition and the prosecutor has to review it. So, in the road rage case, it's, it's a month old, not very old in, in the big scheme of things in terms of turning around my report, but I'm going to finish that. So, when they do ask for a particular case, that one's going to get moved front because there's obviously an urgency, or families as far as that's concerned, if they have a need to file an insurance policy or an insurance claim, I should say, you know, they call, usually they call our office or they call Carmen and, because the funeral homes, you know, know that that's, those are the routes to get these reports done. So, we try to respond on cases where there's more, where someone is indicating more urgency.
So, maybe this is not the right term, but you triage your cases.
Yeah, that's fair. Do, again, basically, I know this is not exciting, but the way I operate is, my oldest case, like when I, if I have time to sit down today, and there are days when I don't have any time to sit down and go through cases, I need some uninterrupted time so I can read through them and finish them and look at all the data. But if I have time to do that this afternoon, what I'll do is I usually start with my oldest case, besides the one that I've been asked to finish with the road rage. But other than that, if there's nobody asking for anything else, I start with these, which I'm now about eight weeks out, so I'm, I'm doing okay right now. But I'll start with the oldest group, finish that, because that makes sense, get rid of the oldest word first. But then the ones that get put ahead are the ones where somebody's asking.
All right, any other questions? I have one final question. On page five of your presentation today regarding the percentage of autopsies within three months, you mentioned that we're seeing a spike in deaths and we're seeing the, the number of deaths, I assume it's the 300 range, don't really reflect that, is it? And then also, so can you address that? And then my second question is, are we tracking deaths based on drug overdose? And if not, can we start? And can your next presentation include that? Because I think it is important for potential grants in the future or anything that we may seek.
Yeah.
To have that information. Thank you.
Okay. Well, that's again, another several part question, so I'll try to make sure we get on all of them. Tracking, as far as what deaths and what are the drugs, the answer is we do that, we produce an annual report.
Okay.
And, I mean, it's also something that certainly I can incorporate.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Into this presentation next year. But, but we do do that and it's, it's in the form of our annual report.
Okay.
So, there's that. Overall autopsy numbers, I don't know this year, I haven't, what we do is, we do autopsies for Kent and a number of other counties. All I know is, as we did case number 231 for the year, which is probably roughly about what we did total last year, I haven't sorted out the Kent cases. But I would say we may not have, well, I don't know if we've had a huge spike in Kent cases, but the main problem is the complexity as far as the turnaround time.
Okay. All right, wonderful. Thank you for your time, doing your presentation. All right, on to item six, Bureau Equalization. I'd like to bring up Matt Wolfer to talk about their performance measure.
Good morning, how are you today?
Good morning.
Well, it's very rare that, that my topic is a little bit more lighthearted, but we'll, we'll try and go, try and go through that. The mission of the Bureau of Equalization is to provide for a fair system of assessment and taxation and to provide professional services for all the cities and townships in Kent County. We do that through three main strategic goals. Each one of these goals is aligned with priority alignment. Two of them are under stable revenues, which makes sense in terms of the revenue side, and the third relating to our remonumentation program reflecting on high quality of life. The first strategic goal is to annually project the property values, study the level of assessment by property class through appraisal studies and/or sales studies, and apply equalization factors if necessary to bring them into compliance with state law. Our second goal is to provide professional mapping services for all of the land in Kent County. And the reason that we do this and the reason that the county elected to form the property description and mapping is to make sure that all land that is subject to the property taxed is taxed once and is not subjected to doubling. So, we put the puzzle pieces together, we make sure there's no gaps and overlaps in the parcel fabric. Our third main strategic goal is to preserve the public survey monuments for public use for the PLSS system. And that is the monuments that we've talked about on several occasions. You're never more than a half mile away from a government monument in Kent County. It's truly a program of distinction that the county had foresight some 30, 40 years ago to come about and there's over 4,000 monuments today here in Kent County. I would call out to you that the, under the first strategic goal, under the fair system, we are responsible and the board is responsible for two main reports each year. First one is the summary of equalized values and taxable values through the equalization report, which we provide to you in April and May. The second one is through the mandated apportionment report, which is the millage side. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, that all of the taxing authorities in Kent County are levying their millages not to exceed the provisions of the Headley Amendment. So, we make sure on the one hand that the valuations are done fairly and on the other hand that the millage rates are calculated and being levied under appropriate state law provisions. Our significant accomplishments in this year, we just completed our aerial photography project. We are now moving towards a three-year cycle where we take what's commonly known as sort of the bird's eye view photographs of the county. This is shared with all of the cities and townships and various county departments. It's used in public safety, it's used by all of the local government units for all of their needs. And so, that has been completed. We just completed that here this spring. There will be another flight that will be coming up in 2020. So, we're happy to be in partnership with the local land. We also, in this last year, we continue to lead in the development of computer assisted mass appraisal standards. This is something that we have helped promote throughout the state, which is essentially the standardization of our appraisal related fees. And that's been a successful endeavor as well. Related to that is we have been sharing information and helped in the development of statewide parcel repository. And I think we're over a dozen volunteering, sharing the data between and amongst ourselves and with the state of Michigan. And finally, just in terms of noting accomplishments, we, again, housed, this year we housed two Kelvin College GIS interns. They worked in three separate departments, they worked in equalization, they worked in the parks and they worked in community development and we were happy to house them as well. Specifically to the departmental measurements, I'd be happy to, any specific questions that you may have. I know mine is five minutes, so I'd be happy to go into any detail that you would like through your questions.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions for Matt today? Commissioner Buckowski?
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
You had briefly touched on the aerial mapping.
Yes.
That's a great asset to assessors because they can take a quick view of, there's been an addition or some improvements in the property. There had been talk a few years back that the next step with the 3D mapping like Google Maps does of the neighborhood, so you'd get the front view of the house too. Do you see that ever replacing the aerial mapping and everything's going to be done on the ground?
Well, 3D mapping has come quite a long way. In fact, if you were to just look on Google or Apple Maps today, you would see the Grand Rapids metropolitan area as one of the larger metropolitans, has a lot of sort of 3D views on that. The, the 3D modeling is very rough still. It gives you, I don't know how to say, it's not very precise is the word I'm looking for. So, it gives you sort of a, a feel for what it's like in, in the real world, but the oblique imagery is at a three inch pixel resolution and I don't see the 3D replacing that anytime soon. I think it's kind of a both and scenario. We may at some point in the future choose to contract high precision 3D mapping done, but I don't anticipate that within the next few contract cycles.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Matt today? Mr. Steg?
Thank you, Chair. I think we talked about this before, but is the aerial photography that the county does, is it a better resolution than, than available on Google Earth or Bing Maps?
Yes. Most, more importantly however, is the suite of tools and measurement tools, the ability to measure height with a degree of precision, the ability to measure area, the ability to measure distances, and the sheer number of photos that you receive would be the distinction between governments like us that choose to procure that as opposed to looking sort of to the imagery that's generally available to the public.
Is your new photography online already or?
Uh, no. The, the top-down versions of it are being reviewed right now. We, we just accepted delivery, I think, about a month ago. And so, once we have that top-down view resolved, we're working with the IT GIS team, we're exploring ways to get that top-down version out there online.
Good one. Then can you just talk a little bit about the first significant accomplishment? Just where are you in the analysis of the, of the process with Allegan County, Moncom County?
Ah, yes. We, we recently, we just amended the contract with Allegan County. Our contract with Moncom County will be expiring in December of this year. I've been in a number of discussions with really all three county administrators, talking about what I believe is the key strategic goals and bringing those data sets together. Once, and so there's a series of discussions with both the IT departments and the administrators on that. Once we sort of get through that, because that's where I really think some of the secret sauce is going to be, once we have that data together and we truly are able to work more at a unified three counties as opposed to us just doing three things the same way on three different occasions, I'll have a much better view of that and we're going to take that experience in what we do, come back and work with all three administrators and sort of take a look at the allocation of time and resources between the three. I anticipate that happening in the, later in the third quarter and fourth quarter of this year.
My sense is that as you begin to work more and more together like this, it's, it's going to be hard to disentangle it later and the end game is, is a gray of cooperation and integration of these activities. Is that fair?
I think so, yeah. Once you're, once you start to weave something together, it seems like it, it becomes more of a tear if you pull it apart, right? So, that's something I'm conscious of and that, that's something, how can we consciously disentangle this if we choose to, if it's in any one of the three counties' interest to do so? I look at it as no risk, no reward type of scenario in that regard. Going to collaborate or we're not and the ties that bind are, are really kind of important for me to achieve the efficiencies from both a data perspective and a personnel perspective. And, but that is definitely something that we wrestle with, but I think we can construct it in such a way that the interests of Kent County will be preserved and we'll have a good exit strategy for one and all of the three counties as we move forward.
At least at this point, you see no reason to slow that process down?
You know, I don't. I think really, I think that we're, we're really only beginning to truly achieve the benefits operationally that these types of collaborations can offer.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bukowski?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Matt, for your excellent work in, in keeping the roles in order and all that stuff. Similar question though to the, as I asked the medical examiner, you know, what are the quality measures? And the, the report doesn't say like when, or do you get brought into the hearings before, like when somebody checks their tax assessment?
Sure.
And then is that one place we can at least measure a win and loss? To say, you know, are your appraisals getting overturned more than others or are they being upheld more than others? But, yeah, so.
Sure.
Go for that tripartite question.
Well, you know, one of the primary distinctions between the assessor's offices throughout the county, which there are 30, and our office, is that we are, we are the ones who set, jacked a true cash value each year for the assessors to meet. So, in essence, we're the ones who sort of set the target. We, through our appraisal studies and through our sales studies, we say, we believe that the market conditions have changed plus or minus X percent in your particular unit and beyond that, in this particular class of property in this particular city or township. So, our measures of our study work are, what we do is we send that out to the assessors and we go through sort of a reconciliation. We have, I, I always say their ticket of admission is an appropriate land study and appropriate economic condition factor study, where they come in and they sort of look at the results of our study and then we, we consider their information, we add our information in, and then we sort of finalize things. What's that, once that target is final, it becomes the purview of the local assessor now to raise the individual assessments on individual properties. And such, the appeals of those assessments is wholly contained at the local unit within the city or township. So, we don't get directly involved in, in the appellate process and how the assessors defend those assessments. Where we get involved in the defense of assessed values is when assessors reach out to us for our specific market expertise, particularly in commercial and industrial, and we will expand and enhance their research preparations for their Michigan Tax Tribunal defenses. For instance, we've done an, an analysis on the big box dark store phenomenon. We've shared that with the assessors, we've shared that with the state and, and talked extensively with Representative Mittern on that. So, we get involved to the analytical side and to the, supporting the local assessors in their defense work, but we are, we are typically not directly involved in the defense of the individual assessments on an annual basis.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Steg?
Thank you, Matt. I've served on a Board of Review for five years. I appreciate all the work that you guys do.
Thank you.
One thing that I'm hoping that you can comment on, speaking of collaboration, is the importance of making sure that those Board of Review members are, are well-trained. And I remember going to a training.
Correct.
Many years ago. Are we still doing those to, to make sure that that part of the puzzle is ensuring that we have some fair and accurate assessments for our taxpayers?
Yeah, it's, yes, is the short answer. There's typically an annual training. That annual training can either be conducted directly by myself in some instances, it's sponsored by our local assessor's associations, the Michigan Townships Association offers training. So, there's a variety of, of methods. It's not always the exact same. We often have Board of Review members that, that serve in long-term capacities and so having the same training over and over. We try to add different aspects of, of the process into some of the trainings, but that is something that is a conscious effort to try and do on an annual basis.
Great, that's appreciated.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions for Matt today? Seeing none, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item seven of our agenda, miscellaneous. Commissioner Buck?
Thank you, Chair. After our CIP discussion this morning, I had a comment and I thought, hold it to this meeting, I talked to Jim on the way over about it. A number of years ago, the Parks Committee was underneath the Roads Commission and then they operated on their own sense with the director and staff. And there's many items on here for parks, there's 10 items, 10 or more, 20 items on here. And not all of them have a father or a mother, they're just sort of out there and we all like parks and we all want to be a part of parks and, but when it comes up on the CIP, left... that never took place, but we have a new board here today and a different board than we had when I was here 10 years ago. But I think there's a lot of opportunity to be a part of the Parks and it doesn't, I don't want it to be a hindrance, I want it to be an asset to the county as the boards that we've had in the past, whether it be the Airport Board. Dan's return to the Airport Board, I think has been a seamless transition for Dan as, as he comes back and sees in the direction that the board is going in today, has probably not changed a whole lot from when he was there before. And then we had director changes. We've had the same at the Roads Commission. The director says, oh, we're going to go to a five-member board from a three-member board? How's that going to work? Is that going to work for me? And he had all concerned and whatnot, but I think the process, process to have a five-member board is way better than to have a, a three-member board. And I say, I think the same for the Parks. I think they should have a board. I think they should have support here. Parks needs friends, they need friends from, it needs friends from the residents, but they need friends from the internal part too, our part. And so when these situations arrive, maybe they do need restrooms this year. I know one time I was riding my bike and I was up at Wabas's and I see they're repaving, repaving Wabas's lane. I talked to Park Turk, he says, well, we don't have funds for that. I talked to John Rice at the time and he saw, take a look at it, and he dropped in 40-foot of pavement on overlook at Wabas's Park. Today, they've got some cinder gravel that they put in there additionally, but back then, if we had a Parks Commission, hey, why don't you just go pave it and then we'll go to Daryl, not him, it just had him. Daryl can make it, make it work because sometimes committees do that to Daryl. That's how he earns his money, so.
But then I'd take it from somewhere else.
Yeah. Well, we don't tell the other people where you took it from. That's, that's the important part. But anyway, that's a comment and, you know, what's the priority? And Roger brought up that side issue. That goes back to Dan and me, early years, most of you've never heard of that before. You know, and, and the trailers and whatnot, some of these things aren't getting done because they need some friends and they need friends on this board, this board and, and the full board. So that's my comment and let the Chair and the Vice Chair hash that over and the board members can think about it and make comments. So that's my comment for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other miscellaneous today?
Just to point out that this is the 29th Annual Greenwich Pride Festival, just outside of our building. So come on downtown to support our LGBTQ brothers and sisters and cousins and nephews. Speaking of nephews, I had a proud moment last night. My nephew Eric did some awesome community organizing, a few hundred people downtown right outside of the being remodeled Veterans Park. It was the first anniversary of the unfortunate event in Orlando at the Pulse nightclub. So people down there for a memorial service and very proud that my nephew, former Commissioner Volkowski's son, organized that. So that's tomorrow. And I know we didn't make a motion, but I'd be happy to have further conversations along the line that Commissioner Vaughn just talked about. How are we as a commission truly supporting our Parks? And I'd be very, very open to those conversations. So, thank you all.
Commissioner? Any other Commissioner miscellaneous today?
I just have one. We have a vacancy on the Ag Board and we did receive applications, so since we just wrapped up some other vacancy positions and filling those, I'm going to ask Commissioner Brevian, Commissioner Steck, to join me again in a small subcommittee just to review those Ag Board applications. We'll be making that announcement as soon as we can. Any other things for today? If not, we are adjourned.
These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban, a multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole, and I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued, to protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community and building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years, and I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our County Administrator Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong, solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind-the-scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today, and I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials, impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community and vice versa. We couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.